Good evening. How is everyone? Wonderful. Thank you so very much for joining us tonight for this very important engagement session about our S R three funds and how to best use those to support our students and families. My name is Maggie Dangerfield. I work in the Division of Strategy and Communications and I'm the Director of Strategic Engagement. And I'm excited to spend the evening hearing from you about your thoughts and ideas and feedback on how we can use this important funding to support our students. Before we get started, hearing from you, which is where we're going to spend the bulk of our time this evening. We're going to have just a brief overview of S R three and what that is and what that looks like going forward. And then introducing a few individuals in the room. I'm going to start with Ms. Amanda Adams, who is providing interpretation services this evening.
Hola, me llamo Amanda. Si necesitan servicios de interpretación, estoy aquí a sus órdenes, así sentada. Gracias.
Thank you, Amanda. Amanda is part of our new Office of Translation Services. Also in the room, we have our Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Dr. Dorita Postaway, this evening with us. We have several constituent district board members. If you'd like to stand up and wave, we'd love to acknowledge you and thank you for being here. Wonderful. I don't see any county board members at the moment. If there's anyone here who has come in, please feel free to stand up and wave as well. And we have several district staff throughout the room that are here to support and listen to your thoughts and ideas this evening. So, a little bit about S R. Let's make sure this is still working. Okay. So, S R stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. And these funds are part of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 to help school districts with the academic recovery from COVID disruptions last year. There are three years to spend these funds and then the funds expire, so they are finite. Nope, my apologies. And we're talking about S R three because there has been S R one and S R two, two other rounds of funding that had specific purposes. For S R three, though, they are centric to academic recovery. And so, these decisions will be focused around students and they will focus on students most severely impacted by COVID-19. So, part of S R three, we have about $163 million that we will have to spend. It's a really large grant and there's about 15 allowable activity areas within that that we can use the funding for. At least 20% of that 163 million will have to be used to address learning loss, but with the other 80% able to be used across those 15 allowable areas. So, within C C S D, with this funding and this opportunity, we have some guiding principles that we wanted to lay out as we go through this planning process. Academic recovery being first, as we mentioned, all of our decisions will be student centric, focused on academic recovery from those disruptions. We will focus on our most severely impacted students. And the allocation of resources will equitably address the needs of students who have been most severely impacted. We'll look at our social and emotional needs and we'll address those issues that have negatively impacted student learning. And also, health and safety of our people that will drive improvements to facilities and infrastructures. So, the 15 allowable areas. As you can see, a lot of them above are more academic phase and there's some operational as well. We have things, the ones in red specifically are the ones that have been narrowed down throughout our engagement over the past month. As those that have been labeled as high priority and of high interest to stakeholders that have participated in surveys, which we'll go over in just a few minutes. So, what does the planning process look like to date? In the beginning of June, we had two focus groups with stakeholders that met for an initial planning discussion over Zoom to talk about prioritization, parent engagement, and school protocols for safe return the following year. Then, in those following two weeks, we had nearly 4,000 respondents to online digital surveys that we deployed by parents and employees, asking about their areas of priorities and how to engage parents, and in-person protocols for August as well. And out of those 4,000 surveys, when asking for them to prioritize the 15 allowable activity areas, there were six that came forward as those that were most frequently prioritized. And those were the activities to address needs of low-income students and impacted subgroups, addressing learning loss among students, mental health services and support, summer learning and supplemental after-school activities, indoor air quality, and educational technology for students. So, at the end of June, we took those six priority areas that came up the most frequently as those that were of interest to support our students. And we posted them on the district website for comments and feedback and also developed another survey, asking respondents for strategies within those six priority areas or areas of action that could be taken to put those in motion for our students. At the beginning of July, we had a team that did parent calls from 24 high-poverty schools. There was about 480 phone numbers that were selected at random to call to also engage parents about their ideas in these six priority areas and in general, to support student success and learning and parent success to support their students. Right now, this week, we're having two community forums to hear more about your thoughts and feedbacks under those six priority areas. And we are also engaging over the next week with student groups, with our parents of special education students, civic groups, and multilingual learning groups that we will continue to hear from in the next couple of days. And throughout all of this, we have ongoing parent engagement on existing community meetings where we're asking two core questions of how can we help support student learning and how can we help support you as a parent in helping your students succeed? So, moving forward from this evening, we are going to take all the input from our stakeholders and develop those into proposed actions that can be implemented with these funds. Those proposals will be posted on the district website for public comment. And then, the list of proposals with wide support will be brought to the Board of Trustees for final prioritization. And the final S R three funding plan will be submitted on or before August 24th, so very soon in the next month. So, those six priority areas that we mentioned earlier, we would love for that to be the focus of discussion tonight with strategies and actions that can be taken within those six areas to support our students that have been most severely impacted by COVID-19. Some examples that we've received in the online survey that's open right now include things like tutoring pre and after school, meetings and trainings in Saturdays and after-hours for parents, the ESAL department, website and links, field trips, library passes, recreation programs, STEAM and STEM programs. These are just examples of the types of strategies that stakeholders have provided for consideration. So, we want to take pause and hear from you. So, this can be very casual. You can feel free to, and we would ask that you utilize a mic, though, when you share your input. So, if you'd like to come up to a mic here on either side and come share your thoughts and feedbacks in any of these areas or things in general that would help support student success, please feel free to do so.
Good afternoon. I would like to say, as far as your six priorities that's up on the, upon the screen. One of the main factors that we really need to focus on in the rural area schools is E L A and math. Money's not going to do us no good if we can't count it. Reading is not going to do us any good if we cannot read. Material things is not a necessity. What we need is qualified teachers in our district that are dedicated to teaching our kids math and teaching our kids English. This had not have been happening here in District 23. I know it for a fact. I've been here long enough. I served on the board. This is my third term. It has not been happening. And this is why we've fallen so far behind in the rural area school because every time we would ask for funding, we would always be cut off at the legs. We not, we do not have any funding for tutoring teachers or our teacher's assistant in the classroom when you got 25, 35 kids in the classroom. How can you function properly with that many kids in the classroom? It's not going to happen. So, as far as educational technology, we do need the internet on this way, broadband. We do need broadband. That's a must. In the past pandemic, a lot of students have fallen behind because of they could not get on the internet to do their classroom. And that's, and that's very disgusting because of the fact that there should have been a Plan B and a Plan C. I'm not sitting here battering anybody, but the rural area schools have been left behind long enough. All of this money that you have coming in, stop it at downtown, send it down to St. Paul District in the rural area schools. Because we tired of, sick of being tired. That's just point blank. Money's always going in schools that do not need funding, but when it comes down to the rural area schools, we don't get nothing. We can't even get teachers to come and stay in the afternoon to teach at one time because of the funding and the distance that they have to drive. And so, we need money allocated in the district to fund teachers that are dedicated. I'm not saying that teachers just to get a paycheck. Teachers that are dedicated in our district. That's what we need. Because if they're dedicated, I don't think we'd be in the mess that we're in now as far as E L A is concerned. Our students trying to read, our students graduating from 12th grade on a 5th grade or 6th grade level. That is unethical. It is pathetic. But then Charleston County School District, that's where it starts. Downtown Calhoun Street, that's where it starts. And we sick and tired of being sick and tired. Disability, we have situation with mental health. We need more mental health in our school setting also. Summer learning product, projects or program, that's a must. Now, today, next school turn, we need to go, we need our students to go to school year-round. So, we need to set the funds aside that our students go year-round school. Why? Because our students are a year and a half behind in their schooling, in their reading, in their math, and all of the other subjects. So, we need to fix the problem. If it's broke, fix it. It's been broke for a long time, so we need to fix it. Now, we got the funding to do it with, let us come forward and fix it. Addressing learning loss among students, that's it. We need qualified teachers in our district. Pay them the funding. Give them the money to travel into rural area schools. Make sure you have teachers and principal, I'm gonna go there, that knows how to deal with rural area schools instead of putting teachers in areas that don't know how to deal with rural area schools. Or deal with black kids, let me put it that way. Maybe you would understand better that way in that term. So, I just got, I just got to hold the pot by the handle. That's the problem that we have today. Teachers do not know how to cope with rural area schools and black students in the rural area. Students 35 and 40, write a, "Why, he dropping paper on the floor." Be for real, people. Now, on our athletic side, I've been complaining. We finally got a new track field after raising hell for three, four years. We finally got that. Now, we need another set of bleachers, stadium bleachers in our district. We need our athletic building that's on the outside that needs to be repaired. Why always patching here and there? We don't need to be going through that. Come in and rebuild it. Put the money in the school. All of this development that's coming up, ain't nobody trying to do anything for the young kids that are coming out of school in the upcoming year. This Midwest Eco Project ain't something that started yesterday. This thing been coming for at least 10 to 15 years now. I know because I've been with it. So, we need to prepare our kids. Everybody not going to college. We got carpentry, we got CSXs coming because of real drop yard. We have warehouses coming. We have concrete, we have carpentry, brick mason, rail experience. We need engineering. We need a lot of things in this area. If not, our kids will be left behind. They will be left behind because everybody's not going to college and everybody's not college material. So, let's keep it real. The rural area schools are suffering and they're tired of suffering. Tired. Lot of money allocated to bigger schools and white schools. But when it comes down to rural area school, we can't even get assistant teacher. But look at the other schools that are striving. You're constantly putting more money into it. Here the other day, y'all want to put $11 million in one door just for another doggone stadium? Be for real and our kids out there catching hell trying to learn? Come on now.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else want to come up? Or I can try to come to you if my court allows.
This is our time. Good evening, everyone, and I think most of you know me. I'm Dr. Ellen Fraser from the school board. So, welcome. And I have just listed a few strategies that I'd like, like you to take a note on. We used to have several programs within the district that was effective in getting our kids up to par when it comes to reading. Reading is a problem. We've done a study here in the district where 48% of our kids are reading below grade level by the time they're reach, by the time they reach 4th grade. So, we know that if a child can read, he will probably stay in school. He's less of a behavior problem. The parents will be more involved. So, reading is still fundamental. And I've listed three here. We used to have a program called Mother Read where the worker would go into the homes and model reading to the parent so that the child could see the mother reading. Another program we used to have, and I don't know whether we have it now, it's called Reading Recovery. And I don't know whether we still have that. Dr. Postaway, do we still have Reading Recovery in the schools?
I'm not caught by that name.
Okay. Okay. Yes, that's another strategy. And the other one is reading coaches. I've talked to several reading coaches and they're now in the classroom. They're ready to get to work so that we can have several reading coaches at our schools so they can help our kids to grow and learn and graduate from high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fraser. We also have Reverend Dr. Eric Mack, our Board of Trustees Chairman, who has joined us as well. Just want to say hello.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
I know y'all have the, the, I think it's K three or the Head Start program that's coming to the school. This would be the prime example. I, my understanding, I have got call from parents saying already that a child cannot attend the Head Start program. I don't understand why, but there shouldn't be a reason why they shouldn't be able to go to the Head Start program that we have. My understanding is you have ample money, more federal funding money, money that's already allocated to the school from the, from the, from the state. So, in order to nip the problem, we have to go to the source. We need the money for the Head Start program. Start the kids off at the early childhood program. By the time they get to the 3rd grade, they'll be able to take the test at the 3rd grade, if I'm not mistaken. That's when they first being tested. So, therefore, since all of this funding is coming in, let's expand the program in the rural area, which would be a plus because you got to remember, you got grandparents that are raising kids. So, grandmama don't know everything. So, if they in school at an early age, that's a plus. That's a major plus. So, I would say to you, and I would say to Dr. Postaway, allocate the money. With all of us taxpayers, allocate the money. This is federal government money, federal funding, not even including the money that's already in the budget. Let's make it happen.
Thank you.
Reverend Glover just about summed it up on everything. Just a few things to piggyback on what Reverend Glover said. Before we could address, when it comes to education, we first have to address the curriculum. The curriculum is not designed for our teachers to teach our kids so that they can be on level. Secondly, I've been doing a little research interventions. We all know that we are behind. That's nothing new, but what are we going to do to correct it? So, when it comes to reading and math, that's where it starts because if you can't read properly and reading for comprehension and understanding, if you don't know the basic strategics to math, you'll never be successful in science and social studies and the other subjects. When it comes to the Head Start placement, and this is what I've been faced with, so I can relate to it. I feel as though when they test these kids to bring them in early, if your child knows the basics, they're set back a year. So, I look at that as a hindrance to where you want the child to be behind when they start school versus giving them the resources that they need to continue on. Or if they're too advanced, put them up to the next grade where they're just not a child in a classroom that knows everything, but they're still learning. When it comes to teaching, and I don't see it up there, but I'm going to speak on the turnover rate. When you have consistency with staffing, the families know what to expect. The, the community knows what teachers are going to be there. But when I'm constantly getting new teachers, new staffing, by the time the staff gets to know the community, gets to know the student, we're halfway through the school year. So, are they able to find out where do they relate to the students? How could they teach the students? When it comes also to the Head Start, it needs to be equal amongst all schools, not just for Head Start, but with all of our intervention. A parent or community member shouldn't have to juggle between whether I'm going to put my child at EB Arlington because they're on the waitlist for Minnie Hughes or whether a parent has to drive from Jean Network to come over here to EB Arlington just to get the resources that they need for their students to learn. When it comes down to the activities to address the low-income students, the rural area is listed as low-income automatically. So, it should not, I personally feel it should not be listed as low-income. They just learn on a different level. We've had much success come from this same low-income rural area that could be given to other students as well. Like Reverend Glover said, when it comes to, every child is not college material. So, when we're thinking about how we are losing in our area is because a parent who child has that manifestation of want to be a brick mason. Well, we don't offer that out here, so they go someplace else where it's offered and we are losing our kids. So, what's prohibiting us from all of our schools being equal so that we are not juggling across the board to make one school better than the next? If we are equal across the board. When you talk about addressing the loss, yes, research have showed where kids who go to school year-round, especially when previously the curriculum and academics were not shown to be successful for them to close the achievement gap. And that's the reason we're having so many schools to close, the reason we are having the turnover rates because when a teacher is not producing, now it leaves that administration and the higher authority, we have to evaluate. This teacher's not producing the scores, so now we need to revamp what we're doing. Well, instead of getting rid of, why not give us the resources that that teacher needs in order to educate their students? Mental health services out here has been a big struggle. Believe it or not, every household situation is not the same. But when we don't have the help to help our kids or help our parents to help our kids, it puts more stress on the teachers because now we have a teacher who, one, don't know anything about the area, don't, cannot relate to the student, cannot assist the student to where they can promote it to an administration or a guidance counselor to be of assistance to intervene before something happens to get that child back on track. Summer learning and after-school has been a struggle now for years. We wanted all of our schools out here to at least offer some type of enrichment. The way how it is now, it's like it's a pick and choose which schools get which resources. Which if it's equally across the board and it's offered to us, then it won't be an issue to say, "Well, we didn't take advantage of it." But we can't take advantage of something that's not offered. Improvement of indoor air quality is a big plus, not just air quality. I walked through a few schools from when I was in school 15 years ago. Bathrooms are still the same way. Cafeterias are still the same way. The hallways are just being painted over. If you chip it, you still have the previous paint before they updated it. So, when it comes down to allocation of funding, stop patching our schools like they patch our highways and route to our schools and give our kids a decent, safe school. When it comes to educational technology, I can relate to that. When it was brought to us that due to COVID, schools were going to be closed, virtual was basically the primary option for kids to learn. Some kids never got on. Some kids struggled when they got on. Some kids were unable to get all of their work due to glitches or whatnot for technology reasons. If we could open up to want to build a whole nother establishment, bring the development that we're bringing to our area, well, that's part of the strategic planning. When bringing development, okay, development comes families. Families come kids. So, we have to make sure that we are securing our schools based on what our community development is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and share? Don't be shy.
Hi, everyone. My name's Joy Brown. Thank you for having me here. I'm actually in D 10, but I wanted to come out and see what, and hear everybody and see what's going on and also kind of put my thoughts into it. I feel like the, the money, the S R funds are coming from a really terrible situation. We had the pandemic. But they're also a unique opportunity to really close these gaps that were spotlighted in the pandemic. They didn't just show up during the pandemic. They were here the whole time. You guys know it. Not everybody did. And that, that's not right, but it's the case. And all we can do now, we ha, we have to fix these glaring inequities, right? I think everybody who's come before me has said a lot of really good things already. I'd like to add that I understand there's difficulty in starting sustainable programs. This money, it is a lot of money, but it is finite. So, we can't, I understand the difficulty in starting a program that, that's not going to be able to continue. That being said, at our schools that really, really need it, we need to have more reading interventionists, math interventionists, and localize those, like really utilize them in the schools that need it the most. Also, additional mental health services and supports for the students. I think that's, that's crucial. Right now, we don't know how this is affecting our kids and our kids, that's why all of us are in this room right now, is the kids. And we don't know how it's affecting them and we can't know unless somebody is able to reach out and talk to them. So, it's, it's crucial that we get those mental health services for the kids and maybe even for the teachers who don't, you know, sorry, who don't, don't know how stressed they are or how this is all affecting them. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Bowen is one of their grant funder. You got to have things to offer a school in order to bring kids into that school district. You got, if I'm not mistaken, that there's a, there was an aeronautic class starting in one of the school in Charleston. Why can't we have one out here? We got all this funding. You got aeronautics. You got Volvo, that's auto mechanics, and you got aeronautics. And then there's, what's the other company we have here? There's another company that's here in Charleston, I guess Bosch or Volvo. Why can't we have a apprenticeship program here in the rural area schools? Why it always have to be in Charleston? That was a conversation that came up a while back. And there's another meeting that's coming up with Bowen here, coming up pretty soon because I'm the regional, I'm the Field Director for Racial Justice Network. And that's going to be another question that comes up because we got funding here, even with more funding, it'll make things- Because we got funding here, even with more funding, it makes things more better because we can get the things that we need for the students. The school that's in Atlanta, on the second floor, it nearly blew me off the roof. They have a bee hive in the second floor, in the wall. They raise their own honey, their own bees, and they sell their own honey. They raise their own quails. This is the big science room now, upstairs on the second floor. We got to be more adventurous, or we just have to broaden our minds a little bit more and stop looking at the little things and just look at the bigger picture of all things. You got to look beyond the picture, and that's what we're not doing. We got to look beyond the picture. Look at what these kids could be doing. Look at more, more, we could offer the kids in the area. And this school, Dominique Black School, in Atlanta, Georgia, striving. Striving. I would like for Dr. Postowich to pull Baptist Hill, the funding that y'all get for Baptist Hill downtown, or when y'all get all the funding from these big companies, I would like to have Baptist Hill funded by Boon by itself. I would like to have it provided by itself, private entity with the high school. That way we can get what we want. For athletic department, we had to go out there and raise 13, 14, 15, $15,000 for equipment. Jerseys for the football team, jerseys for the basketball team, jerseys for the baseball team. What are you doing to say? Where are our tax dollars going at? We had to go out there and raise this money. But everybody in there pay taxes. Everybody downtown getting their big checks, $100,000 salary. But our kids suffering. I just getting started. Especially how the money is being spent, capital gains. Oh yeah, we ain't got there yet, but y'all will see me sooner than that one.
Good evening. I'm Martha Davis. I'm almost afraid to say anything after that statement from Reverend Glover. And I totally agree with him, and I totally agree with everything that has been said. Now, what I have to say is not necessarily regarding the funding, but I feel I need to say. We need to unite in our community. We're not going to get anything done by raising, you know what. We need to work and work together. And we have three community groups out here. We have the Baptist Hill High School Alumni Association. We have the District 23 Education Improvement Network. And we have the constituent school board. I'm asking that we all work together to let 75 Cal who know that we are not going to accept what we have gotten in the past. We want new changes for our kids. Because it's horrible to see these kids with nothing to do after they graduate from high school. We have kids that are in college that are struggling, that are hating Baptist Hill because they did not get the education that they needed. And they're in their freshman year in college doing high school work. That's sad. And we should all be ashamed to even have to think that this is what these kids are going through, and we need to do something, and do something now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lou Peters. I work here at EB Ellington. And I'd like to echo what Dr. Frazier just said, speaking about the importance of reading, and specifically, early reading. Reading Recovery is a program designed for the most at-risk first graders. It's very intensive, it's 30-minute individual lessons. And data is kept on every single child who is in reading recovery. And research has shown that the average child needs about 60 lessons or less to catch up to the national average in reading. So we can't wait until kids are behind for years and have been struggling for years. We've got to catch them early. So 60 lessons, 30 minutes each, if you do the math, that's 30 hours of instruction or less. We can catch them up in weeks, not years and decades. So we really can't afford not to have reading recovery for our most struggling young kids. So, thank you.
So you're saying you need help, right?
They need help.
Okay.
And the teachers don't have a helping, elaborate, recovering teachers around. But Dr. Postowich is right, we're not currently doing it in the district.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and share? It's about 6:40-ish, so we have about 20 more minutes or so. She's coming.
Hi, I'm Ms. Lee Young. I'm new to the district. I'm going to be working here at EB Ellington. So I know that you guys already use iReady in the district, but you don't use the teacher toolbox instruction that comes along with it. And just having worked with iReady in the past, coming from another district, that's where the real meat of iReady is. Being able to take that data that you're getting from the iReady program, and then having something to utilize to then provide intervention for the students. So I think putting more money into that iReady instruction, at least giving all of the teachers access to that teacher toolbox where the information, where the intervention materials and other curriculum materials are available is going to be very strategic in helping our students in that reading area in addressing that data information that we're getting from iReady. Another thing would be ELL, providing resources for teachers in class for those ELL students, whether that may be visual things that they can use or visual cues in the classroom to help those students who are transitioning from, you know, maybe Spanish being their one and only language to now learning another language. So having some visual cues, so putting more resources into that to provide the classroom teachers with visual resources for the ELL students. And then the other thing, speaking to after-school programs, I think an after-school literacy program center around STEM would be amazing. I've actually had the opportunity to teach an after-school STEM literacy program that was geared towards students who were not the best of readers. They were the lower-level performing students in the school. And we tracked that, we started it at the beginning of the nine weeks, and we tracked that, you know, how was that literacy program centered around STEM, helping those students over the course of the nine weeks? And we were able to see those students grow either a full year or a half of year just from coming to that after-school STEM camp twice a week and doing STEM activities that were centered and based upon literacy and reading strategies. So I think those things are important. And then, of course, educational technology for students. I think it's important for students to be one-to-one. It's important because we are in a technological age. And when you are able to maneuver your students with the times, that helps them to learn and grow with the times as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Well, while we, oh, yes ma'am, come on up.
My studies over the years cannot show. Every teacher, or most teachers are passionate about what they do, but when they don't have what they need for their work expertise to show, that dictates where they go. It should just be equal across the board. Give us what we deserve to get our kids where we need. And here's a time where the funding can be utilized that is outside of the iReady funding. And to speak on what Glover said about the taxes, I did a tax examination. 70% of our taxes out here goes to CCSB. And let's say on the average, your taxes are $600. Out of that $600, you got $490 going to CCSB. Tell me where it is. We had two schools to close in our area. So fundings that were allocated for those two schools, where have it now been rediverted? There's no excuse when it comes to money in our area. There's no excuse when it comes to money in the state of South Carolina or Charleston County, period, when it comes to the schools. So when you talk about, let's be honest, dark money, developers. We need to invest in our kids. Don't allow them to use the kids as a strategic way to get funding for development. Don't allow it, we shouldn't have to be bringing teachers from overseas or workers from overseas if we have them right locally here. Give them the training that they need.
So I think this platform, or to be able to speak...
Come on up here so everyone can hear you through the camera. Thank you.
So I am grateful that we have this platform to speak and share our thoughts and concerns, which aren't new concerns, because I went to EB Ellington, I'm 37. So I went to EB Ellington on Ellington Road. I went to Artie Schroeder, I graduated from Baptist Hill High School. And these problems that we have today in 2021 were the problems we had when I was in school. When I went to college, I was not prepared to write any type of papers. I am grateful that I have my mom, who's in the audience. She's big on education, so she helped a lot. I'm currently in school now, getting my PhD, but that's because of my perseverance. And so I have a rising third grader here at EB Ellington. And I always wanted my babies, I have a one-year-old, too, to come to the schools that I went to. But I can't say that I'm 100% satisfied with the education that he's receiving. He's in advanced studies, but what does that look like at EB Ellington? I have several friends who are assistant principals within this school district that has informed me on many occasions that the advanced studies program that we have at Ellington isn't really advanced studies. And so when my child was in kindergarten, the student-to-teacher ratio was about six or maybe 10 to one. And he had an assistant. First grade, it was about the same amount of students. But since we had COVID and things that have happened last year, now he has about 25 students, about 20 students in his classroom. And don't quote me on the exact numbers, but his classroom is a lot larger. And so I've seen my student, I mean, my child, have regression in reading and math. My son used to do two-digit subtraction, three-digit subtraction easily in second grade. This year, just a few weeks ago, he could not do it. Reading, he used to be an excellent reader. Now, he's not that good at reading. So I, part of it is home, because everything can't be done in school, but I am concerned. And so I love that we have this platform here to share our feelings and our thoughts. And, you know, this lady just provided some wonderful data. But like, where do, what do you do with this? Like, I see Dr. Postowich, if I'm saying it correctly, like she's making notes, I'm assuming, from our thoughts and comments. But like, who's recording this, or like, what are you going to do with our thoughts? Like, who, like, what do you do with this information? What do you do with all the stuff that Mr. Glover, Reverend Glover, has just said? Like, what are we doing with it? And also, too, it's just, I'm, like, how are we going to? So you're telling me here that we have these high-quality assessments. So like, what is that? Like, what are these high-quality assessments? Like, you can talk to, and talk above our head, and talk at our level, but tell me exactly what is the name of this high-quality assessment? What is the evidence-based activity that my child will be receiving? When you say assistance to families, what is that? Tracking attendance, sure, there's, I don't know what her name is, but she calls the minute the mayor misses the day out of school. Wonderful, she does her job, great. But I need some specifics. And then, too, when it says, "Address the needs of low-income students," that is great. Everybody has different incomes, but my child isn't low-income. My child will never be low-income, and that is not fair. And I suffered with this all my years of schooling, because I never came from a low-income home. And so there are many resources that I could not get access to because my mom has an education. And so my babies will suffer from the same thing, just like she mentioned, for the students who test for this pre-K. My baby passed that test with flying colors. And so I had to keep my baby in daycare and pay for it for another year and so he could come to EB Ellington in kindergarten. And that's not fair, that's money that I could have saved. The resources are here, so why does my child, and I felt this way when I went to college, because there were financial aid that I could not get because my mom's a nurse? So why do I have to suffer because my mommy's a nurse? And why does my baby have to suffer because he doesn't have a, gratefully, and I'm very appreciative that he doesn't come from a low-income home, and that he's smarter than his peers? So like she said, it's as if we are setting our kids up for failure because if they're too smart, then they get less resources. But if they're not smart enough, then there's a limited, just like Reverend Glover said, there are people who can't get into this pre-K or whatever the new program is. So I love that we have this platform, we get to share our thoughts and feelings, but then what? Because that's the type of person that I am. And so that's a question that I pose to you, like, literally. Like, from, we have 10 minutes, five minutes left. So what is it that we will do from this wonderful sharing of thoughts and feelings? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just before you give your feedback to her.
Absolutely.
As I sit and listen, and some things that I have learned from, you know, just through life, is that every child learns differently. Every child learns differently. And so we all have a different learning style. So do we have teachers that can fit, can we test the children to find out their learning styles and put teachers in those classes with the learning style with those children? That is something that I learned about, and my wife and I, we had to do the same with our children. Because every child learned differently. When we take a whole group of kids, and just because they're on the same grade, in the same age, and we put them all in one class, and this teacher, this kid may learn with kinesthetic learning and someone with a different style. Every child learned differently. Have we ever thought about doing something like that in Charleston County School District?
Thank you.
You could have one, you got one student right now that's going to school, and I already have one credit. Why? This student that I know of, she's only going to school. But she already have all the credits. Why should this child have to go back to school just to be in school? When they can go on to college? My son was advanced already through school. There was nothing that was set aside for the students that was more advanced than the other. In other words, we should have had, like, simply, like, create magnet school. There should have been something there for those students that are highly achievers, high achievers. And I can pat myself on the back. My son had the opportunity to be the Charleston County Assistant Governor, I mean, what do you call it, downtown Charleston? No, no, no. He was in the county government office. He turned down some administrative job, graduated from Baptist Hill. All the way through school. Went to the state police department, graduated from the academy, worked his ass. Just bought his own house. Now he's at the city of Somerville Police Department. High achievers. He could have been out of school, but we don't have nothing in place for those high achievers. And all the thing we doing, we hurting them by hurting them back. We do more harm than we good to those students. That's why we need to have teachers that are in place when we have these high achievers. In the classroom, we need to move them all to the next grade. Because all we doing is hurting them. We hurting them. We may think we doing them good, but we hurting them, why? Because now they have to stop their mind to deal with things here, with the one that's here. But the mind of, the mind is far gone. That's something else we need to look at, we got the money to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, were you waiting to make a call? Okay. That's okay.
I just want to add that even though the rural schools have always been lagging behind the schools that's in the more prosperous communities, I would like to give props to District 23 that we have a lot of successful people that have graduated in spite of, in spite of, we have accomplished a lot, and we have a lot to hold our head up high because we've had generals to come from Baptist Hill High School. So we are very proud, but we could do better. And that's what we are asking, where do we go from here? From this point, moving forward, what are you going to do for us? What are we going to see? We've been having meetings forever. Like she said, she's 37 years old, and I've been in the school system since I was six years old, right here at Miley Hill, at that time. was six years old, right here at Miley Hill at that time. And those same problems existed then, and it still exists now. I have since retired, and we still facing the same issues. So how are we going to fix it rather than just talking?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Ms. Brown, I just want to share, um, right before you step up, so we do have some forms that we're going to pass out, and they are, they look like this. But they do have those six activity areas, and they have some of the examples of the things that had been submitted before, but there is an area underneath that says my ideas. And so thinking back on our discussion, the very specific things that Reverend Glover was naming, a partnership with Boeing, that the innovation of the school in Atlanta with the selling of honey from the hive in the wall, things like that. I would encourage you to put those very specific things on here so that we can have them with everything that we're collecting right now. And I can talk a little bit more after Ms. Brown speaks about what we're going to do with this, but I know I was, let me find my notes, reading examples earlier, but the examples that we got from the survey, they are very, very specific things for each school. And so we would, we would want that in this feedback from tonight. That was part of tonight to discuss this, to talk about it out loud, and also to, to have you submit that so that we can put that in with everything and take action in these areas that are going to support your students. So I just wanted to, to address part of that question, a little bit of that question, and also share that, um, speaking about the terminology in the priority areas, you know, that terminology is what the, the federal government set forth um, in those fifteen allowable areas. They weren't worded in a way to, to, to be ambiguous or to, to speak um, above or anything like that, but that, that was the, the specific terminology the federal government used. So we wanted to just use the words that they were using, but also talk about what that looked like within each of those that isn't so ambiguous or broad or um, high level.
Um, and you, you might talk about this later, Maggie. Um, I, I would like to thank the district for holding these town halls and allowing people the opportunity, sending out the forms. This has been really great um, to be able to hear from the public. But I would encourage the district and the board to um, to continue with the transparency, especially with these funds specifically. Um, I know at the meeting Monday, it was talked about, um, and it's been talked about at a few meetings, that there would be an oversight committee, and that, I think that's possibly going through uh, audit and finance. Um, but I would encourage um, have some uh, community, local community, people in this room, people in the room tomorrow, um, folks who are really, really invested and part of the community, have them be on part of these committees. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. That's great. Yes, ma'am. That is not online. So that, that's just here for these sessions. Certainly, so there is um, an online survey still open that has these six priority areas and asks you to provide the same feedback, so you could go to that survey online on our homepage, but we also wanted to provide the, the written paper forms for us to collect tonight, if you had something on your mind you wanted to put, pin to paper to today. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it's being livestreamed. Yes, ma'am, you could view it right now on our YouTube channel. Yes, ma'am. Sure. Come on back up.
Here's my question to the superintendent and all those here from the district. When you give us the resources that you're giving us, do you compare those resources to the test that we give our kids? Because given us resources and given us, given the teachers what they need, has it ever been a comparison to the information that's being given to talk, to be teach? Does it prepare our kids for this test? Because too often I'm seeing where these kids are giving standardized tests that doesn't compare to the education that they're being taught. So we have to be careful, and we keep saying, well, we need resources, we need resources, and all these other fundamental tools that are coming, but all these fundamental tools are going to be centered around the test that our kids have to take.
So we have to teach the South Carolina standards, and the tests have to test those standards. That's, that alignment is there and it's built in.
But has it ever been evaluated? When you say closing the achievement gap, what is preventing that gap from being closed? Because it's not just all on what the kids are learning or their learning level, it's what they're being taught, how they're being taught. If I'm taught to do mathematics by five pennies here, three pennies there, and then on a test, I'm seeing it in a different format, so you're teaching it one way, but testing it another way.
Right.
Because oftentimes our kids' report cards reflect one grade, and then when they take these exams, we're seeing something totally different.
Yes, ma'am. So you're, we, we agree with your point. A test is a really weak measure of what a kid can actually do very often. Where we, we give the test we're required to do, but we also use teacher assessments, and we use that information to try to formulate the responses to the questions.
So my follow-up question is, so the past two years due to COVID, these kids were not penalized, or a lot of colleges didn't look at ACT and SAT scores for our kids to get in. So with the data that you guys collected over the COVID induced pandemic, what has been implemented based on those test scores to say, well, we're going back in person, here's where we're going to address, where we actually visually see the decline in our kids' education?
So we use a combination of the test results and the teachers working with the kids and making those decisions about based on what children do every day?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And, and so going back to answer the question about what we're going to do, and I know I glazed over this earlier, so we have our town hall tonight here, and then we have one tomorrow night at Cooper River Center for Advanced Studies. And then we have that survey online uh, that's asking for examples of areas and strategies under these six priorities to take action on. And so that's going to remain open, um, and we're going to take all of this feedback that we're getting from both of these sessions, that survey, our other engagement sessions that we mentioned with students, uh, with other groups, and that we're going to take that and compile it, and then put together a proposal that will, with all of that information from tonight and from everything else, put together another proposal with this, this more detailed, more granular specifics, and put that on the website for comments and feedback, another iteration of comments and feedback. And then based on those proposals, we'll submit a final one to the Board of Trustees, and those, the Board of Trustees will then decide on the final prioritization, and we'll submit that plan to the government for our S R funds. So all of this, though, will be occurring, what is today, the twenty, in, in the next thirty-four days. So very quick timeline, very quick turnaround. Um, I definitely encourage you to utilize all of these specific ideas that we were talking about tonight to support students, to support District Twenty-three, to put those in the online survey or on your paper so that they can get in to all of these other responses that we've received, so that we make sure that we are capturing your feedback in multiple ways, um, so that we're able to, to take action on things that you've suggested. Does anybody have any other questions or want to make any other comments before we adjourn for the evening? So I believe the money will be dispersed in the fall? Well. So as for the S R three funds, that distribution begins in the fall and, and the funds will be available for use through 2024?
Will there be a plan for District Twenty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
So then, once the plan has been approved and the money has been dispersed, like how will we know as parents that this is a specific uh, activity or outreach or whatever this activity is from the S R program? Like, will it be like, usually to identify or communicate that, like how will we know, how will we see literally this money?
Yes, ma'am. So we'll convert updates, we'll also, um, on the sign-in sheet, we ask for your contact information so that we can keep that, and then when we take all this feedback in and create these new proposals, we can push them to you directly so that you can see um, what you shared tonight as part of the discussion. Is there anything you want to add?
Like, once school starts and the funding has been dispersed, like let's say for the um, I don't know, for priority we were talking about, um, I don't know, whatever kind of priority, like how will I know that this specific activity, oh, we're a summer program, you know, whatever it's called, that came from this money?
From S R?
Which specific activities or strategies came from this specific money?
Yes, ma'am. I'll let Dr. Postoway answer that.
Program, if it's preschool program, for example, um, it would be by school. So you can see where, what, if it's tutoring, if it's extended day, if it's summer session, you can track it by school. So you can see school by school, by school, what the program is.
Okay, so then with my child being at Ellington, then I'll be able to possibly receive some type of notification or email saying, hey, this is the preschool program from this funding that your child is eligible for, would you like him to participate?
So it won't be that specific, but the, uh, the quiz will be the Ellington's here and the Dallas right here. Right, and we don't, we won't, it's really difficult to say these funds were used for specifically this thing, but we'll tell you which funds were used to fund what programs and what schools have those programs, and you can decide if your child's eligible, if he wants to participate or not. So we're required to put twenty percent of those funds directly to students, it's our desire to put almost all the funds.
So then you see where, you know, we could still be confused or have that mistrust because you're telling me that, you know, here today we have this town hall meeting, we have all of this money that we, or that is available for our school, but then when the fall comes and this money has been dispersed, then it's more so of a, you know, a generic saying that, oh, well, the money has been dispersed for this, and it's possibly going to our kids for that. So we still aren't able to see, you know, and some people, and for me, I have to see. So some, we're still not able to see where this money is going. So we know we had this meeting, we know it's coming, but I can't put my hand on where this money went as a parent.
Absolutely.
Yes, that, that's really helpful feedback.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Reverend Glover is saying, we have all of this money, Reverend Glover, but it's like, ooh.
Yeah, that, that's really helpful feedback. We need to give more thought to how to make sure that the, the, the funding per school, per program is spelled out in a way that people can see that.
The transparency.
And communicated.
Yeah, transparency. The more specific the better.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a projected implementation date? Because just like you have the dates for submission, I know the government often has a projected implementation date, just when the funds have to be, or the program has to be implemented, and that should be known as part of the, the grant or whatever that was written. Is it for the calendar school year of twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, or what? What is the date that we have the implementation date?
Yes, ma'am. So it, it is a three-year um, source of funding, so it will begin, um, if our plan is approved in the fall and run through the fall of 2024.
In the fall of 2021?
Twenty, so it'll begin in the fall of 2021, and the, the funds will run through the fall of 2024. It's, it's only three years of funding. Provided everything is submitted and approved, yes, yes. Be, since our, our deadline is August fourth, then the, the dispersment would be in the fall.
This is history. I would say compared to what other school district we got, got a nickel or, or better. Now, this is not by the government, it's just by our superintendent, because it goes out to the board. The money's already here. So it's over here with the superintendent. So we ain't got to worry about the government.
No.
That, that's behind us. That money's already, that's guaranteed money. So y'all not going to sit here, pick and pick, pick, pick this one, pick that one, pay hopscotch or monopoly, whatever. Either you're going to do, or you're not going to do. Because I'm keeping a track on this, you better believe that. Because you see me on the news. I'm tired. I'm sick and tired of the way the district has been treated. I am, very much am. Our students are failing. We at the mercy of education, but who gives a hoot about it? Not none of y'all, because y'all sitting back with your hundred thousand dollar paycheck, the young be paid. And our children are steadily suffering for education. Y'all got parents that are waiting to get their kids into an early childhood program to start the kids off at an early age so that they can educate them by the time they can take the third grade test. But then y'all closing the door. But they got to give them all the money, you're right, they give what they want. And I guarantee you, they get some of this money right here. If they wanted to spend eleven million dollars on a new Daniel Stadium, and our kids down there trying to learn how to read, Little Jack Corner, Jack in Jail, but they getting millions of dollars, but we got to sit here and suffer. I'm tired of it. I am. I'm very tired of it. Because it ain't right, we done suffered long enough, and I'm tired of it. And Dr. Postoway can tell you that. Because I be wondering like, why don't I? I mean what I say, and I say what I mean. I'm sick and tired, tired of being sick. Because y'all always picking here and there when it comes down to the black students in this, this district, y'all don't give a hoot about it. You don't. Because our children would be able to read if they did. We don't even have the same book the other schools, any other district we got. So how can we educate our kids? How can it be the same across the board? Y'all not doing a dang thing about it. It's not the same. And I know it's not the same because I've been in those schools. I've been in there. I know how there's a used second-handed book for years. This district have suffered for many years, even when I been in school. Suffered a many years. We get second-handed books from other schools in Charleston. For years.
Does anybody have any other questions or anything else to share before we close? Well, thank you all so much for coming tonight and for sharing with us. We greatly appreciate it. As mentioned, this meeting is on our YouTube channel, um, and we will grab those forms for you before you walk out. Um, and also if you have any other ideas that you'd like to submit, please go to our homepage on the website and utilize our digital survey there. Yes, ma'am.
So like how attention that we have grandparents raising kids or grandparents or someone who's unable to attend tonight, how can they submit this for, so that you guys can get their feedback as well? Because everyone's not getting, everyone's not getting.
Right.
So how big is that equal right to what they're making?
Yes, ma'am. So we have called some parents, and we also have, um, and again, this was quickly mentioned earlier, we, we have had individual staff members going out into the field to existing community meetings and passing out that form and having it filled out. We certainly can make it available, though, um, to y'all, and if you'd like to share it with your other members of the community and, and send it back to us, we would appreciate that as well. We can connect on that. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, absolutely.
An electronic copy, and then he can make copies for the entire EBLington, uh,
Absolutely.
Jane Edwards or whatever the schools are in the community, because if you sent home flyers to me about fundraising, uh, lollipops and all that, lollipops and stuff like that, then I think this is worthy of being sent home and putting my child's book back, I mean to take a look at.
Sure, absolutely.
Several people that would be missed if we just told our friends or our cousins.
Sure, let's, yeah, absolutely. Let's talk about how we get those back, and I also have it in Spanish with me as well. Okay? All right. Thank you all so much, I really appreciate it. Drive safe.